I call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for August 23, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Mrs. Danick is excused.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungard?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
I would announce that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room if anyone wants to take a look at that. We do have one set of minutes for your approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. And that brings us to special reports, presentations, and celebrations of success. For this evening's student celebration, the Lincoln Board of Education welcomes Ogis Jen, the leader of this year's Lincoln Public Schools Student Serve, and co-presenter Faith Irvine. Both students are seniors at Lincoln East High School. You may recall, LPS Student Serve is a student-led district-wide initiative committed to instilling civic responsibility in our students by promoting behaviors of good citizenship and volunteerism in our community. Welcome, Ogis.
Thank you. So, hi. My name is Ogis Jen. I'm a senior at Lincoln East High School, and I would like to thank you all for inviting us here today. So, basically, as Mr. Mayhew said, Student Serve is a student-led nonprofit here in Lincoln that basically seeks to promote volunteerism within elementary, middle, and high school students. So, the way that our nonprofit is basically structured is that elementary students have the opportunity to volunteer or work with a nonprofit agency within their elementary school. So, say, Tabitha, for example, this year can volunteer with an elementary school, say, Maxi Elementary School, or an elementary school can actually host an activity in and of themselves. So, for example, Morley Elementary School has been hosting an event for years prior where they planted a community garden as part of their participation in Student Serve. At the middle and high school level, students can sign up for the week of September 19 through 24th to volunteer with over 24 nonprofits that we're partnering with this year. So, throughout that week, they can choose their own slots to volunteer with, and they can volunteer in groups. Basically, we're trying to shift towards a week-long initiative to really promote volunteerism within the students of the Lincoln Public Schools.
Hi, my name is Faith Irvine. I'm a senior at Lincoln East. And one other thing that we're really passionate about at Student Serve and what drives our work is connecting civic responsibility and engagement within the classroom. And as you know, with GOPo and civics, there's now a service requirement with those. And then also encouraging students who maybe don't have that requirement to still show the importance of being involved in your community and to make that connection during your schooling years is really something we see as important. We also see Student Serve as a great opportunity to promote local nonprofits and the local initiatives that are going on around Lincoln. I think sometimes we combat the that Lincoln is a boring place talk with that. We show that there's actually some really cool things going on around our town, and they connect and align with student interests.
Additionally, we also are, one of our main goals this year is solidifying the partnership with sixth and seventh grade teachers. This year, as part of their social studies curriculum, they have to kind of question what is civic responsibility or what is global citizenship. And so, at Student Serve, we've really sought this year to help sixth and seventh grade students and sixth and seventh grade teachers explore that question. So, as I mentioned earlier, we've been recently shifting towards a week-long initiative. But this year, we also want to kind of perpetuate this idea that volunteerism is a year-long initiative. It isn't something we just do for one week. It's something that we engage with for the rest of our lives. So, we've pioneered the Student Serve Spotlight Program, which is a quarterly initiative where we highlight a group of students. It could be an athletic team or an extracurricular, like, group of students that has done something phenomenal in the terms of volunteerism. So, it could be, you know, donating an impressive amount of volunteer hours to an organization, or even doing something innovative in terms of volunteering. But basically, this year, we've pioneered a Student Serve Spotlight Program.
So, as you can see up on the screen, those are just a few of the organizations that we're paired with this year. What I love about this is that there's a wide range. There's, you know, small community areas. There's also more environmental groups like Keep Lincoln and Lancaster County Beautiful, and then even something like Tabitha, which is a little bit more aligned with health interests and that sort of thing. So, not only are we getting to promote local nonprofits, but we're getting to pair those with the interests of students, which I think is really key in showing the connection with civic responsibility, that it's not just working in a food bank. It can also look like, you know, picking up litter or potentially serving cookies to elderly.
So, we've been pioneering or piloting an online Student Serve signup for a few years now, and we've expanded this year to a signup genius. And so, basically, we just wanted to highlight that that signup is now available on our website. And also, we're really pursuing social media as a mechanism or a medium of communication, as we are targeting the demographic of middle and high school students. And, you know, those students really engage with society or engage with their surroundings now through social media. Kind of following that, our marketing strategy this year has, as I mentioned before, has really been on social media, but additionally focuses on, you know, going to the classrooms. We've established classroom representatives at almost every high school. We're working at the middle school right now. And having those representatives come into classrooms and kind of talk about Student Serve and encourage the students and really get them, you know, excited to be involved. We really want to make sure that it's not just the GOPo, it's not just the civic students who are participating, that again, that volunteerism is something that every student within the Lincoln Public Schools can engage with in a productive manner, as it's not only something that is good for them, but it's something that is good for the community.
So, please feel free to reach out to either of us with any questions you may have, concerns, or even if you just have an idea of a really great service opportunity for students. Are there any questions at this time?
Annie?
Well, if I were a student and I wanted to sign up, can you give me the address of where I would go to do that?
So, actually, you'd go to our website right here, wp.lps.org/studentserve. And then on the top, there's going to be a big advertised banner that says signup here, and that'll take you straight to our signup genius page. And one thing that I've worked pretty hard last year and then continuing this this year is making sure that our signup is a pretty intuitive signup. In years prior, we've had a kind of complicated signup that is really confusing for the students, and, you know, they don't get notified if they signed up in the right position, and it's hard for them to keep track of what they've signed up for. But signup genius is a wonderful platform. It's really easy to interact with. Students can clearly see when they've signed up, but also, it allows them to sign up in groups. High school students are social beings. We like to be with other kids. So, if we can sign up with a group, signup genius is wonderful for that.
Yeah?
How did the two of you get picked to run Student Serve this year? Does it rotate? I'm not real familiar with how that's structured.
So, usually, Student Serve is kind of a leadership position that you start up in your freshman year. And then, you know, if you are passionate about the organization and continue to work hard, then the executive director before you will choose. So, I got chosen to be executive director my sophomore year, and then I did it my junior year, and this is my senior year. And so, as executive director, I process applications for people like Faith who chose to be the organization's department chair.
Cool. Annie?
So, at the end of this, what would success look like for you when you're done this year?
So, one way that we base success is that from year to year, we keep track of that data and those numbers. So, on a very simplistic level, we look at how many kids volunteered this year, how often were they volunteering, and with how many groups did they? And that's just a very simplistic way that we view our success, but also just to hear the personal anecdotes of students, I think, is really where we catch a lot of the success, whether we change someone's idea on what civic responsibility looked like, whether we made a really cool connection with someone in the community. To us, that's what the success really is. And to start that dialogue with students, like, hey, do you want to come volunteer with me this weekend? That sort of dialogue that's happening around students, that's the success for us.
What's that? Steve?
Well, first of all, thank you for being leaders in what I consider to be just an incredibly viable and valuable initiative in a community. I remember six years ago when we had the very first conversation about Student Serve, that, you know, we knew that as students attach themselves to giving back to their community, that would be lifelong learning. So, thank you for that. And I know, I know the struggles of the organization have been how do you carry it forward, particularly when seniors graduate. But I want to applaud you both for that. So, this is going to make a big difference. And then a favor, if I can ask, since you're both from East High School. In light of the long-term weather report calling for no snow this year, would you tell the East High students they don't have to email me quite as frequently?
I would take shoveling off of the volunteering.
We're a pretty active student body on Twitter. I noticed that this last winter, a lot of people were tweeting at you.
That's passionate, that's passionate student involvement for you.
Right.
All right. Thanks, guys, so much for coming, not only for the presentation tonight, but as Steve said, for your leadership and your volunteerism. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, and that brings us to public comment. I have one card from Lori Lamer. Lori, if you'd like to come up. And you?
Just have to, I didn't have my cards to bring, so.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Lori Lamer. My husband, Bob, is a recent new employee with Lincoln Public Schools. And we're here tonight just to kind of make you guys aware of a concern that we have with some of the benefit programs that Lincoln Public Schools has pertaining mainly to the prescription benefits in your health plan. My husband's diabetic, and we did find out when he applied for Lincoln Public Schools that there was going to be a different percentage rate for insulins and things like that, but had no idea what difference it would really make in our insurance. He was on a plan with me at my employer, but once he had the option of insurance, he couldn't stay on my plan. But just an example as to what LPS's plan is doing to us, a $75 copay with our insurance has now turned into 556. And that's just for one type of insulin. We have, he takes two different types of insulin. All the supplies, all the insulins are rated at a flat percentage. There's no minimum, maximum, like the other prescription drugs in the program. And I guess our concern is why a diabetic is being singled out in a plan because they have a chronic disease? I mean, there's multiple chronic diseases. Why is diabetes being singled out and, you know, just charged a flat percentage? It also is kind of confusing because the brochures that comes from Lincoln Public Schools says that one of the drugs is a 20% copay. Blue Cross is telling us, no, it's 25%. And on the paperwork for another one, it says it's 30%, and Blue Cross is telling us, no, it's 50%. So, there again, I mean, if you have any idea of the cost of drugs, it's exorbitant. I mean, we're basically losing money just coming to work for LPS. And I guess, you know, LPS has such a reputation of taking care of its employees and having good benefits and being a part of the city. I mean, my dad taught with LPS for over 40 years. He's like, oh, you guys got to get on, you know, that's, it's a great place to be. Well, not if you're diabetic. It just, I mean, it's become a real hardship for us. He's had to change insulins, which affects his health. And I've gone through, I've sent, I sent a letter in July, you know, we kind of stated our concerns to Human Resources, and they referred me to EHA, and I talked to Greg Long there. He basically, you know, was saying, well, this is how the plan is, but thought that we should make you guys aware of what's really going on out there and wondering why just insulin and insulin and diabetic supplies are singled out. Every other drug under the program is, you know, covered with a minimum and maximum and out of pocket. And so, I guess that's, I just want to voice a concern. Maybe their plan should be reviewed. I don't know. Any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Lanny?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Barb?
Say.
Comments? Annie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to the University of Nebraska State Museum, UNSM, or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2A set forth in the agenda materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Got it. Matt?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 565628 as part of the agenda item. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on the same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Thank you, Matt. Other comments? Seeing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have items for first reading. First, we have from the Technology Committee, Item 9.1.1, computer laptops for our certificated staff. Lanny?
This item comes from the Technology Committee, where I served with Annie and Matt. This is part of our class plan for our technology plan, of which we're in the second year. The devices are 3,500 laptops at $840 each, or 2.94 million total. The price per unit is a little bit lower than what it was the last time we bought laptops for teachers, which is good because we have more teachers now, and so, we needed to increase the number of laptops that we purchased. One thing you'll note from the materials is that we're looking for a six-year life cycle on these devices. The first three years will be with teachers, and then for the second three years, the devices will be moved over to the computer labs at the elementary and middle school level. And the devices that teachers currently have are in that third year, and now will be moving into those computer labs as well. And I believe with that, we take any comments or questions, but this will come back for the next meeting.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, as Lanny said, this will come back for action at our next meeting. Next, we have from the Superintendent, Item 9.2.1, permission for proposed additional compensation for health technicians. Eric?
Yes, thank you. Every year, throughout the year, we monitor the recruiting, hiring, and retention practices of the district to monitor, to make sure that we are, that we understand our retention and our recruiting efforts. And based on this information, then, we make recommendations to provide information to the board for negotiations purposes, for bargaining purposes, to inform committee decisions, also to inform the budget process. And recently, we identified employee groups that have been particularly hard to retain and hard to recruit over time, and we identified health technicians as a position that is particularly hard to fill and hard to recruit. So, as a result, the district is recommending that recruitment and retention funds in this coming year's budget be allocated to enhance the previously approved salary that the board had already approved for health technicians. Specifically, this proposal would call for additional compensation for health technicians of $2 per hour for next year, and we would ask that the board consider the approval of this proposed compensation that would be before you at the next board meeting.
Very good. Questions? Okay, seeing none, that'll come to us, back to us for action at our next meeting. Eric, do you want to move on to 9.2.2?
Sure.
Permission for proposed memorandum of understanding with the Lincoln Para-education Association.
Yes, the district has also identified paraeducators as a position that is particularly hard to fill, hard to recruit, hard to retain. And as a result, we are also recommending that recruitment and retention funds in this coming year's budget be allocated for the purpose to approve a salary increase for paraeducators. Paraeducators are a bargain group, and so, we are asking for approval to enter into a proposed memorandum of understanding with the Para-education Association, and that would be to increase all paraeducators by an additional 16 cents per hour. This is in addition to the 34 cents per hour that was already approved as part of the negotiations process. That would bring their total increase for paraeducators to 50 cents for next year. And once again, we had asked that the board consider that for approval at the next board meeting.
Lanny?
So, if I could ask about this as well as the previous proposal, are these the two employee groups where we have the most difficulty retaining and hiring staff?
Yeah, yeah, they really are. Last year, and I would also add into that, transportation. We, if you recall, we entered into a similar process last year with transportation where we, we did some changing of the schedules to get increased hours for transportation. But these particular, these three groups are very difficult to recruit and certainly hard to retain.
Okay. And you anticipated my second question was, is this similar to the action we took last year for transportation?
Similar, just in a, in a different manner, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, that'll be back for action at our next meeting. Eric, if you would continue on then with the 2016-17 insurance rates?
Yes. So, for 21 years now, the district has maintained a self-insurance program for many of our coverages. And it is, it is an owner-controlled self-insurance plan. There's many benefits to this, one of those being obviously lower premiums because we control the spending up to deductibles that we self-impose, $250,000, $500,000. And so, we can negotiate lower premiums. That's one advantage. Another advantage to having a self-insured program is that we control those claims from the very beginning. So, our legal gets to be involved in those. We know what's involved in that claim from very early on. And so, the self-insured program has been very beneficial for the district. Every year, we enter into a process where we solicit quotes for premiums, and we do this through Arthur J. Gallagher and also Unico. They help us go out to the market and seek insurance coverage in the areas that we need coverage. And that's primarily in the areas of property, liability insurance, excess workers' compensation, and then also boiler and machine insurance. You'll, you have an attachment for this item that describes the quotes that we got for this year. This year, the quotes include an increase of just over $91,000, which is about 7% in premiums. Most of this increase is due to increased exposure. As you know, we had the Y-Song built, we had additions, we had the new Nuremberger Building, so we had increased exposure just due to building. But then we also had additional laptop exposure. So, most of that premium increase is due to just increased exposure. We also had a unique anomaly this year with the hailstorm. And the hailstorm created a very large claim for us. We're still navigating that claim. It could be anywhere. We're anticipating between 1.8 and 2.8 million dollar loss on that hailstorm. And so, obviously, the carriers would be sensitive to that as well. But we, you can see there, we're proposing that we approve these quotes with an increase of just over $91,000. I've invited Kim Miller from Risk Management and also Tom Shampoo. They can be here to answer any questions that you may have. But we would ask that the board review this, and if possible, if we could approve this to a second reading tonight, that would be very valuable because the end of the, of the fiscal year is before our next board meeting.
Questions or comments? Connie?
I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this second reading.
Lanny?
Second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. All right. Next, that brings us to our scheduled action items for tonight. First is Item 10.1.1, newly annexed property to the City of Lincoln. Lanny?
I would begin by moving that the board approve the proposed attendance areas of Maxi Elementary School, Pound Middle School, and Southeast High School for the Pemberly Place annexation.
So, Matt?
I'll second that.
Lanny, did you have a comment? Or, Lanny?
This item was before us at our last meeting, and if there are any further comments or questions, we'd take them.
Questions? Seeing none. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to Item 10.1.2, the 2016-17 Lincoln Public Schools budget adoption. Lanny?
I would begin by moving that the board approve Item 10.1.2, the 2016-17 LPS budget adoption as printed in our board materials.
Connie?
I second that.
Discussion. Annie?
I just want to say, as a member of the Finance Committee, Kathy calls it baptism by fire, and it is true. It's my first time in my life of working on a $400 million budget. I'm looking at Dr. Standish because I always mess up that number. And something came up lately about lack of discussion about the budget, that there wasn't much commentary about the budget. And I just kind of want to make it very clear that I myself have been in a lot of discussions about this budget with a lot of people who care deeply about the fate of our students, where they're going to school, who's teaching them, how well those people are compensated, the standards that we should be having for our buildings, the standards we should be having for mental health care. We've had such a range of discussions on how you, we use the funds we have in front of us towards the best good and the best end. And I just think, you know, sometimes we miss that in what's happening here because those discussions aren't often seen up front. And I just really want to make it very clear that I myself learned a lot. As in any budget, you know, my husband and I make a budget, and he'll still get his, something for him that I may not get. And we still have to work on it. I still think there are things to be worked upon. But I just can't, I just really wanted to make it very clear that the discussions have been very deep and very sincere about what we're doing here. And what we're doing here is looking towards the best end for all, every single student that's out there. And that's very hard to do when you have 40,000 individuals. Just told my son last night, every one of you has a unique brain and a unique way of learning, and that's the goal of figuring out how to do that. And I really think this budget works very hard towards that end. You know, we're not there yet, and we probably will never be there, and that's our job. But I just wanted to put that out there, that discussions have been happening.
Thanks, Annie. Lanny?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Finance Committee for all of those discussions. There is so much work that goes into this budget every year, from the Finance Committee, from staff, from the people in the community that look at our budget and come forward and offer comments. I really, I look forward to voting for this budget. I think it's a budget that focuses on classrooms. If you look through where the changes in the budget are, they're on compensation for teachers and staff, the people that make the district work. They're hiring new teachers to accommodate the growth that supports our students. The priorities are in the right place, and that's no surprise. That's the result we've gotten. Every year, we've gone through this process. Look forward to voting for it.
Thanks, Lanny. Matt?
I, I, first of all, also want to say thanks to the Planning Committee. I had talked about seeing if we could possibly increase the speed of the sound equipment. And I know that the Planning Committee really looked at that, and the, the schedule just doesn't work to do that. So, thanks for looking into that, Planning Committee. You know, I, I've heard from a lot of people, and I recognize that this You know, I, I've heard from a lot of people, and I recognize that this budget does outpace COLA and student growth a little bit, but I applaud the significant step that we're taking in reducing the general fund levy. I think that's a, that's a, a great shift for our community that shows that we're being cautious about how we're using the resources that are given to us in, in providing great education for kids.
Thanks, Matt. Other comments? The one thing that I would say is that something that I, you know, has been a factor for the last several years is just our incredible growth in student population. And while we've been dealing with that growth, we've been building new schools, we've opened the Career Academy, we've implemented digital curriculum, and we've done all that while lowering our levy seven cents over the last 10 years. And I don't think we get much recognition or credit from the community on that sometimes. But that we do, I think, a very good job of making sure that we have the funding necessary to take care of our core mission of educating children, but then also doing what we can to keep spending reasonable. And you can look over the last 10 years at decision point after decision point, where if we'd made different choices, our levy would be higher right now than it is. That's not luck. That is deliberate choice, the will of this board, to, to take care of the needs of our kids while also doing what we can to keep spending as reasonable as possible. I think we do a good job of that, and so I'll be very happy to support this budget. If there are no other comments? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to informational items, and I have notes from several board committees. Let's start with Lanny. You've got a couple, doing Personnel Policy for Kathy, and then Technology and Strat Plan. Yes?
Okay. Yep. Thank you. Kathy, of course, is the Chair of the Personnel Policy Committee and was not able to be here tonight, but she asked that I provide an update, and Eric may jump in and help on this one. But the Fair Labor Standards Act has new regulations that go into effect December 1st. And what it is, it's the requirements around the exempt status for employees, and it's changed significantly. There's a salary threshold so that if you make over 23,000, excuse me, if you make under 23,000, you are non-exempt. That threshold has moved up to 47,000. That's a significant change, and it affects a large number of employees. And this is something that Eric and his staff have been working on for a number of months as they've been preparing for this. So, some of the things that we discussed in the committee that I'd like all of our employees to know is that whether you're salaried or whether you're hourly, we value what you do. We value your work supporting our students. Staff has met with all affected employees and explained what these changes are. And I guess I would turn it over to Eric for any additional details that you'd like to have on this.
Yeah, we had a significant number of employees that we wanted to meet individually with and make sure that they really understood what was behind the change. Because anytime you change compensation, you change the way you do that, that can sometimes feel strange. And so, we have just, we're, I think we're about to finish up our last meetings with some of those employees. I think we have one or two left. But they've gone well, and they seem to understand, and, and I think that we're moving in the right direction.
Also, update from the Technology Committee. Of course, earlier tonight, we discussed the laptop purchases for teachers, but this year is also the second year of our Student Chromebook Rollout Plan. And new this year would be 7th grade, although the students that are in 7th grade had those devices last year. So, the 6th graders have those devices now. And we're also piloting in Lincoln Northeast and Lincoln Southeast. So, this is our first high-school-wide rollout. Last year, you'll recall, we did the focus programs in the Career Academy. Last year, we also did 3rd through 5th grade and 6th grade. So, this, again, is the second year of the three years, and the Technology Committee is reviewing that process as it goes along. And then finally, the Ad-Hoc Strategic Plan Committee, which Connie and Annie serve on with me, has had our initial meeting with Dr. Joel. We've talked about the process around the update. As you know, our, one of our board goals this year is to engage the community in a process of capturing information on what's important to our community about our schools and what direction we need to head over the next five years. Our committee has met with two board members so far. We're going to meet with the board members that are not on the committee so that we can have a process that will meet everyone's needs. We plan on updating the board regularly, probably once a month, as we move forward through this process. And that concludes my committee reports.
Good report. Thanks, Lanny. Annie, you have something for student learning?
From student learning that I am on with Connie and Lanny, with some of the changes, like, ooh, dice going everywhere. We, one thing we really wanted to get an update on this last meeting was what's happening on both the federal and in the state level with the AQuest and the ESSA Plan. And what we found is that we're in an ambiguous year. I think that's an interesting way of looking at it, but that in AQuest, that they will be doing their next update in fall of 2017. So, we may not see a lot of changes in how they are looking at, about how they're going to be evaluating, because they're doing some evaluation of the process themselves. And so, that's a big kind of thing for us to know because our ratings may not change, but because that's, they are changing how they're looking at the process. Or it's in transition, I don't know if they're changing. And the second important thing to know is about the ACT, that in September, the State Board will be deciding, I believe, we hope, on whether, whether it'll be an ACT, SAT, following the legislation change of last year, is still kind of an ambiguous type of timeframe. So, those are kind of the two big things. We are going to be in the future looking at, and doing some serious looking at where we stand with some of our, on the early childhood accreditation and early childhood, that whole large question that we've kind of put out there, as well as some of our alternative schools and our class sizes and financial numbers and so on. So, bringing that back on where we stand.
Thanks, Annie. Going back to AQuest for a second, did the committee discuss the AQuest process? I know that that is still kind of new. Are there still some adjustments or modifications being done to it, or is that a pretty stable process at this point?
The AQuest process?
Mm-hmm. The ranking system, the things that they look at, are they still making adjustments? Do we know?
That's my understanding, is that's the, that's the purpose of kind of waiting another year before they do any more of the, how they're going to give that ranking. They're going to be changing a few things and keeping a few things, and it was a good pilot year last year, and NDE themselves realized that some changes had to be made. Am I correct?
Yes, you are. Good job.
Thank you.
With ESSA and some of the requirements our state is, is looking at, kind of determining that there's some more factors that need to be considered. So, before they do another rating, if you remember, all of our schools received a rating with the AQuest system, they're going to essentially freeze those ratings. And so, what we're going to be looking at is are there ways to recognize where we've had some significant growth, knowing that growth would have factored into maybe a rating going up? And knowing that won't change, how can we recognize some of the growth that we've seen this year anyway, while we wait for the state to kind of redetermine what that process is going to look like for the 17, 18 school year?
And when we were in Washington DC several months ago, one of the things they were talking about is with ESSA, some kind of fallout between what the lawmakers had in mind when they authorized it, and then how implementation is working with the Department of Education. Is that having any effect or fallout on us, or is there kind of a wait and see at this point?
The wait and see is kind of the fallout. We're just waiting for guidance. As the state gets guidance, then we'll see what happens at a local level. But it's kind of just transitional. And then, of course, with elections and things like that in the mix, I think everyone at a federal level is, is just kind of waiting to see what's what. But we're, we're waiting on NDE to, to get everything processed, and then they'll provide guidance that then the school districts will move forward with.
Great. Thanks, Jane. Thank you, Annie. Any other reports from committees? All right. Next, that brings us to the Career Academy. Is there an update, Lanny?
Yes. The Career Academy Board met on August 10th, and as of that meeting, we were looking at 326 new students with 104 returning for a total of 430. And that was as of that meeting. My understanding is that the first-day numbers were a little lower than that, but still over 400. Students' plans change as we approach that first day of school. But we're still over 400 students, which is a significant accomplishment. Also, as you know, the TCA is a two-year program for juniors and seniors, so this is our second year. So, it's the first year that we're offering a second-year curriculum.